Good afternoon, everyone. Today is December 7th, 2021. This is Marie Sullivan and I'm here with you this afternoon for a work session, an agenda review, and then our board will be convening into an executive session. I want to say before I call the meeting to order that we've had several requests for citizens interim at this afternoon at today's meeting. But I want to remind everyone that in keeping with our meeting rules and the longstanding practice at MCCCD long before my time, there is no citizens interim scheduled for tonight because they take place at the regularly scheduled governing board meeting, which is the fourth Tuesday of the month, unless there's an emergency or other special circumstance. So I welcome all individuals who would like to participate in citizens interim, but we will do so next week. I want to remind everyone that we set aside a portion of the regular board meeting agenda to hear from citizens on terms of general concern. And in compliance with the open meeting law, the board does not discuss nor take action on general issues or issues that are raised during the portion of the meeting agenda. Also want to remind folks that if there are more than nine requests to speak on the same or similar topic, and those are received, nine of the similar requests will be presented in the order in which they were received up to the three-minute timeframe allotted to each request. Other requests on different issues would then be presented separately following the same protocol. And this is all articulated in our policy 4.5 Board Meeting, Section 5 Public Attendance and Discussion. So as a reminder, we do record all requests for historical purposes and on topics may be taken under advisement and placed on a subsequent agenda. So during our COVID-19 virtual meetings, we have established a different protocol, which was to forward your comments to the board and the board's assistants by emailing. And this is public documented for people to refer to either through Board Docs or on our website, So we ask that if you do have a request that they're received prior to 3:00 p.m. on the day of the regular board meeting, so that would be next week by 3:00 p.m., and then they will be read aloud for the record in historical purposes. So again, wanting to just remind everyone of that practice. So there's no thinking that we have chosen not to engage in that activity this evening. It is reserved for our regular meeting. So with that, we're here in a work session and you know we generally have a song to start us off. And so our colleague, Mrs. McGrath, is the one who will be identifying the song that we need to play in our heads as we go through the meeting. So Mrs. McGrath, what is that song?
Happy Holidays.
There you go, everyone. Yay. So Mrs. McGrath has set the stage for us to be thinking Happy Holidays. And so thank you for that. And so at this time, I'm going to call to order the work session in the Maricopa County Community College District Governing Board again today on December 7th, 2021. I want to remind everyone that we live caption our meetings. And so please look in the chat window of our WebEx meeting where you will find a link for that. Please click on that link to open a webpage with the live captioning. And the attendance at board work sessions is not mandatory. Just want to note for the record, board members that are in attendance, I would like to note first that Mr. Quentin Evans, our student trustee, is not able to be with us this evening, nor is Ms. Susan Bittersmith. So beyond that, Mrs. McGrath, you're present. Dr. Norene.
I'm here.
Thank you. Ms. Smith.
Present.
Dr. Thor.
Present.
Ms. Nguyen.
Present.
Thank you. And with my presence, we have six board members present for tonight's work session. Today, we are working on and being provided a report on the item Policy Work Session Regarding 4.2 Manner of Governing, its board policy or policy, and 1.19 Delegation of Authority by Regulation. And Ms. Jaclyn Smith is the board's chair of or the chair of the board's policy committee. But and so she's contributed to this. And Dr. Gonzalez, I know with your staff involved, please introduce our presenters this evening.
Thank you, President Sullivan, members of the governing board and guests that are with us today. You're going to hear from Dr. Craig Jacobson, who's a faculty in English Department Chair at Mesa Community College, who will go over college course fees. And then Dr. Eric Lozinski, our interim provost, will provide a recap of grants and curriculum. Teresa Tony, Director of Office of Public Stewardship, is going to provide an update on proposed amendments specifically related to policy, 4.2 Manner of Governing and Administrative Regulation, and 1.19 Delegation of Authority for Grants. And then Q and A will be facilitated by a board member, Smith, and then we'll be going back to you for closing remarks. So with that, President Sullivan, I will turn it over to Dr. Lozinski if there's anything more that needs to be said. Otherwise, I think we're ready for Dr. Jacobson. Dr. Lozinski, is there anything that needs to be said before you turn it over to Dr. Jacobson?
Thank you, Dr. Gonzalez and President Sullivan, members of the board, members of CEC and guests. All I'd like to add is we've had these conversations as an ebb and flow over some period of time. And there's been some intensity at some points in time and some other times where it's somewhat been a little bit of less intensity. But we're very excited about the collaboration that has led to where we are today. And we look forward to, again, conversations about course fees, curriculum, and also grants. So with that, we'll go ahead and turn it over to Dr. Craig Jacobson, who will start the conversation on college course fees.
Thank you, Dr. Lozinski, President Sullivan, members of the governing board, Chancellor Gonzalez, CEC colleagues and guests. My name is Dr. Craig Jacobson. I'm currently serving as Chair of the English Department at Mesa Community College and as co-chair of the Course Fees Task Force. I'm pleased to be here to present on the work of that task force. Before I begin talking about that in detail, I wanted to publicly acknowledge the work of the task force members, who are frankly too numerous to name here. But it was a diverse group from across the colleges and the district office, from all employee categories, who began working on this even as we were all still figuring out what remote work looked like. And I was proud to be part of the important work that the task force accomplished. So we can advance the slide. I know you're all familiar with the basics of the course fee process, but I just wanted to do a quick recap to highlight some features. Currently, the 10 colleges each individually apply for each individual course fee. And each fee that is approved is actually a maximum as the college can choose to assess less if it turns out that less is necessary. I created a small illustration.
Excuse me, sir. This is Ms. Sullivan. It's difficult for me to hear you and I've been receiving a few texts that is difficult for others to hear you as well. Is there a way you can increase your volume or accommodate our interest to hear you better, please?
Take a quick look at my settings here. Turned up in... X. So let me see. Here to have it turned up on my computer as well. So I'm not sure. I'll try to speak up. Does this help any?
A little bit. One more notch.
All right, I'll try. I'm at the end of a long day of talking and so I'm probably losing my voice a little bit.
Oh, sorry.
No, that's okay.
It's much better now.
Okay, good. I can speak up.
To present. Thank you.
All right. So the, I created an illustration on the side there to indicate that the, there's a difference sometimes in what is approved and what is actually assessed. The approved is the maximum, of course, but colleges can, over time as circumstances change, assess less or even assess none, even though a fee has been approved. The current system of each college applying individually for each course can restrict the ability to develop and offer courses quickly. The process can move slowly. And one college can be at a place where they have been approved and have the course fees necessary to sustain a course. But another college that might not have an approved fee might have to wait until that for a course to be offered. And that can sometimes, as you well know, mean a semester elapses easily before a college can offer a course. It also leads to a situation in which the board might very well approve a fee for the same course on 10 different occasions and for 10 different amounts. And because of the way this works on an individual level, that means the board can actually be approving for a single section of a course at a single college. And all of this leads to disparities in what the colleges can offer to students. If that course fee really is necessary for supplies or equipment that are important to the class, then that can mean that it gets left off of a college's schedule. And as you, I'm sure you can easily see, this isn't really aligned either with our shared course curriculum nor with the move towards guided pathways because it creates a disparity in what colleges can viably offer when we're trying to move towards a model that allows all colleges to offer the pathways that make most sense for them. Please advance the slide. So the Course Fee Task Force really has just a couple of basic proposals on the table. And what that really means is that one college would apply for each course and that fee maximum would apply for that course at any of the 10 colleges. Just as before, the approved fee is a maximum and the assessed amount can be later, as you see illustrated in the right-hand box. And that having this somewhat streamlined process allows the ability to develop and offer courses more quickly. And a college that wants to begin offering a course that already exists finds that a fee maximum has already been approved. This brings us more into alignment with a guided pathways approach to our curriculum and to a more genuinely shared curriculum. It's more in line with our shared course bank as we've been operating for some time. The task force also articulated the acceptable use guidelines, clarified them and ensured that they were student-focused. You saw those some months ago. I know it's been a while, but we have those available still. We believe that the proposed changes reduce the disparities in what colleges can offer to students quickly. Another part of the task force recommendations is that fee and balance review become an integral part of program review and budgeting so that those balances would maintain at a level appropriate to being able to offer those courses, but not come, become too high. And that we believe that these recommendations would maintain board oversight through regular reporting. Are we doing questions now or are we holding questions to the end?
Dr. Jacobson, I believe we'll hold questions towards the end. So with that, does that conclude your remarks regarding course fees?
Yes.
Great. Okay, thank you. Wasn't sure of that. So thanks so much. And how about we proceed in this manner? And first, before we jump into curriculum, I want to offer my apologies in the microphone to board member Smith in my haste to turn things over to Dr. Jacobson. I failed to realize we did have one introductory slide that you were potentially poised to provide some insight on. So before I move into curriculum and grants, I want to provide that opportunity for you, board member Smith, if indeed there were some remarks you wanted to add.
Thank you for that. Since we've already jumped in, I'll be brief. I just wanted to provide just an overview that the three topics for today are the course fee approval, the grants and curriculum approval, which you're about to speak about. And then our session will conclude with our discussion of a proposed policy change from the staff that is being prepared for submission to the board for a first reading at a future board meeting. And I did want to point out that we've previously had some related sessions that provided some background context, including a previous presentation by Dan Phelan. And I think with that, I will keep this brief and turn it to you to continue to the next section about grants.
Well, thank you very much for adding that context. And again, my apologies as I was balancing between multiple screens here, the PowerPoint and our WebEx connection as well. So my apologies there. So again, thank you for that context setting. And also, Dr. Jacobson, thank you for the high-level course fees overview. And at this time, we'll go ahead and talk now about the next step, which is curriculum. And if you could advance the slide one time, that'd be wonderful, Elsa. So as you're all aware, we have a curriculum process in place in our system that has historically and continues to follow a shared and rich, a shared governance model, very rich with faculty input and ownership of the curriculum. And along this way, as we highlighted in June, we have a number of checks and balances in place throughout the development and approval process. And as you look at the slide, you can see that, again, through design and developments, the instructional council approval with our work of our CCTA, which is the Center for Curricular and Transfer Articulation, they're evaluating and processing. We have a district-wide curriculum committee meeting, excuse me, approval process, which is in a meeting. Obviously, then we have the provost and AVC approval. And then ultimately, we then go to the governing board. And we discussed and shared that process again at that June work session. The emphasis, though, with this slide is just to reiterate, there is a significant number of checks and balances along the way prior to reaching the governing board. Next slide, please. So again, I'm not going to read necessarily through these three slides, excuse me, three bullet points on this slide. But we do recognize that, given the importance of curriculum, it does require such a dynamic agile process. We're often provided feedback that from our industry partners as we work with our colleges about the need to be as swift as we can be and as agile as we can be in getting curriculum approved. So that way, we're aligning with our mission goals and our educational delivery to our students. So it's very important that we continue to work on that efficiency. And what we're going to be proposing today, and you'll hear more details from this from Teresa Tony, is looking at our, the governing board approval process to new curricular items that will allow us to have a greater expedition of the modifications to existing curriculum so that way we can get it to the colleges sooner and faster and ultimately to our students sooner and faster and also to our industry partners sooner and faster. So again, that's just a quick, high-level overview of what we discussed in June at a prior work session regarding curriculum, which had greater detail. But this will then be leading into the ask that Teresa Tony will be providing more detail on in just a few moments. So with that, let's go ahead and transition to the next slide. And again, this is just a high-level overview of our grants process. And again, recalling back to the June board work session, just want to reiterate that, again, we have this number of checks and balances that are in place to assure that the grants that are being submitted, the grants that are being, are being received indeed align with our district's and college mission and our visions and is one that we are committed to supporting throughout. So again, we have systems in place that look at the financial implications. We have systems in place that have an administrative review of the grants, all the way from our application to the award process and accepting of those awards. We definitely have secured approval at all levels, from the college level to the district levels. And when needed, we have legal services review when signatures are required. It's very important that you all know that approvers also evaluate any of the financial impact of the proposals and awards. And they assess any of the commitments of our system resources moving forward. And it's important that we all just remember that, that are, any grant that we're submitting, we're very confident that aligns with our college and district strategic priorities and also aligns with our governing board outcomes. So again, just reiterating in a very high level that we have a number of checks and balances in place. So the next slide. Again, this is just reiterating those, the control process, if you will, that's currently in place for grants under $100,000. The college president is signing off on that. The district director for grants will as well, followed by the associate vice chancellor, followed by the provost, and then the chancellor's desk is needed, which in this case is grants accounting. So that's our current process for those grants under $100,000. And what we're going to be asking today is looking at this process and looking at the role the board can delegate, if you will, to the chancellor and others within this process for those grants that we are submitting and in turn receiving. So in both instances, though, I just want to, again, highlight the number of checks and balances and internal controls that are in place to ensure that, from a curriculum perspective and from a grants perspective, that we are indeed looking at all the steps along the way, making sure that the appropriate parties are involved and making sure that we are moving forward in a manner that aligns with our, our system level and also our local college priorities and goals. So with that, I will go ahead and I believe now it's my time to turn it over to Teresa Tony, who's within our Office of Public Policy, to talk about the specific ask that we are bringing forward to you all as our governing board for consideration. So with that, Teresa.
Thank you, Dr. Lozinski. Elsa, please advance to the next slide. So essentially, having reviewed our own internal policies and having reviewed policies of other educational, higher educational institutions throughout the United States as well as in Arizona, what staff will be proposing to the governing board at a future meeting is to make an amendment to two primary documents. The first would be the governing board's Manner of Governing Policy Title. And in this policy title, we would recommend that we amend language to add two sections that the board may elect to delegate through policy certain areas to the chancellor. And that routine monitoring reports for these delegated areas will be submitted by the chancellor to the board for its review and approval. By submitting reports continuously to the board, we believe that the board will continue to meet its fiduciary duties for approval of these items. The second area that we would ask for amendment is adding a section, Section 15, where the board delegates authority specifically to the chancellor to approve the three areas previously discussed. So for grants, curriculum, and college course fees. And in addition, in order for this to be implemented at the administrative level, we would need to amend the current Administrative Regulation 1.19, which is delegation of authority for grants. So, so what we are asking is that the delegation of authority for grants Administrative Regulation be expanded to include the other areas of curriculum and college course fees. Through this recommendation, the board would still continue to directly approve grants that require the purchase of real property. And the board would also continue to approve intergovernmental agreements. And like I said before, we would submit semi-annual reports to the governing board for each of the areas where grants have been accepted, curriculum changes, and college course fee changes. And the board could also make a determination that it could adjust or articulate different elements of approval authority along the way. So with that, I would like to turn it over to board member Smith for facilitation of the Q and A period. The immediate next steps would be to present this for first reading and then for adoption. Board member Smith?
Yeah. Thank you, everyone, for your updates and helpful presentations. I'll open it up now to my members who have questions. Would anyone like to unmute and pose a question?
This is Marie. I have, I have several, but I'm glad to defer to others if they'd rather go first. Everyone's silent, right?
I've got several questions, too. So whoever wants to go first.
Well, let me ask the first one, if I, if I could. So what I've perceived through the presentation is an impression or a perspective that there is some impediment by having the board in its level of authority in the three areas identified. Is that an accurate summation from your perspective? Board member Sullivan, and I would answer that question. When staff have approached us with the idea of possibly making adjustments to the approval levels, that is part of a sentiment that was discussed, the amount of time that it takes to present items and get approvals. And it was board member Smith who asked that we do benchmarking and look at what other higher educational institutions were doing. And it was through that review that we determined that it, what Maricopa was doing was rather unique in having this level of approval done at the board level. Many higher education institutions in the state of Arizona, as well as in the United States, have these approvals done at the level of their executive. Now, as a follow-up to that, so the issue was time, which can always be solved by looking at efficiencies rather than approval, it seems to me. But the issue of higher education, are we being compared to Board of Regents models versus governing board models of community colleges in that? Board member Smith, or can you answer that for me, please?
I'll actually turn back to, to talk about some of the community college models. We specifically wanted to make sure we're also looking at community colleges. Teresa, do you want to provide one of the examples, please?
Yes, thank you, board member Smith and Chair Sullivan. We actually did. We looked at community college models in, in the state of Arizona. We also looked at community college models throughout the United States. And we looked at multi-college locations, so those that would be similarly situated to the Maricopa Community College District. And we did look at some universities, but primarily we were looking at community college models and also others that may have administered the policy governance form of governance. So we really did try to compare ourselves to peers who had a similar governance model as ourself. Okay, and then if I can ask one more and then I'll, I, you can all come back to me. So the issue of checks and balances in a shared governance model, to me, seems pretty important. And, you know, my reaction is, I like the concept of agility and time, but I'm a little perplexed by if the board delegates so much authority and only has authority on the real estate issue or IGAs for grants. And then moving to course fees, you know, the issue of the need for consistency seems important. But somehow, as we look at bigger pictures today of budgeting and perhaps in the future, differential tuition model, which might impact course fees, it seems that that all needs to be discussed together as opposed to in isolation as a practice. And, and then from there, you know, that we would just have opportunities a couple of times a year to look at a report, particularly again also tied to curriculum. I'm not sure I'm comfortable giving that away, that oversight approval away because that's what it feels like in this presentation. I, so I don't know why, what's buried there in my conversation. But the issue of check and balances, again, what problem are we trying to fix in, in that arena given the other two points that I made? Dr. Lozinski, you may want to call upon some of the, the team members that worked on the actual proposal[1753.21] actual proposal to embellish a little bit more about some of the challenges that they faced in the day-to-day operations of these items.
Sure, thank you, Teresa, on that. And Board President Sullivan, your questions, I think, and comments are spot on in so many ways. What's definitely want to highlight the shared governance and checks and balances. We agree with that, and I think that's why we brought that forward, that we we have that spirit of shared governance and internal controls with this. When you asked the first question regarding this, is the board an impediment? I don't know that I would, I personally would have ever used that word, speaking for myself. I think I would have said, though, that there are, again, challenges with the elongating of the process, if you will, and if there are ways to make the process more efficient, or ways to shorten that process. That's what the spirit of this is in some regards, and to do whatever steps we can to support any interest of of keeping us all as as strategic as we can be, and sometimes less operational if needed, if those operations can be managed at a level that we all feel comfortable and confident with, that the checks and balances are in place. So regarding course fees, I think what I'd like to do is ask if there's any comments that any of the members of the task force would like to offer regarding, again, the comments that Board President Sullivan offered and some of the feedback regarding the initial thoughts on course fees first, then we'll see if there's anything additional to add regarding curriculum and grants. So with that, I know, Dr. Jacobson, you were you were on the line, but I'll turn over. You don't mean to put you on the spot, but I obviously am to some extent. Is there any comments you'd like to add regarding sort of the what problem we're trying to solve and as we're dialoguing on that?
Sure, I I think I can speak to that a little bit. I don't feel put on the spot. No, I do think, Board Member Sullivan, that you identified a number of things that the task force spoke about. You know, you're spot on with the word consistency. That was one of the big issues. I think as far as the timing issue goes, my experience has been that when when one is developing curriculum, in order to really have a viable piece of curriculum that can go into the schedule, all of the pieces have to come together, and that is the curriculum itself, the course fees, and any sort of transfer implications, right, Ajax values and such. So, you know, when we string these processes out in various ways, and they are all subject to the cycles of various levels of approval, it can mean a very long time between the initial beginning of curriculum development and when something is really viable to put into the schedule. And, you know, that's just from a practical kind of ground level experience. I think that in, you know, that you're right, there are issues potentially here about differential tuition and the course the course fee. Task force spoke a lot about that and narrowed our focus to really focus on the current process for course fee approval and how to improve that.
Thank you, Dr. Jacobson, appreciate that. And and I guess regarding curriculum and grants, my my initial thoughts are, we definitely provided and presented at the June meeting some pretty detailed or high-level thoughts with that. And again, I think the problem we're trying to solve in some regards is, again, that expediency from a grants perspective, knowing that historically, the the number of grants that have been approved is is pretty high in relation to the number of grants that ever received sort of a not acceptance, if you will, from the board level. So we looked at that at some level and just thought, maybe there's some efficiencies we can bring forward with that. And regarding curriculum, again, just looking at the volume of what comes forward, some of which are extremely minor changes, I do think the thought of new curriculum and new programs coming forward to the board is still part of what this proposal would embody, but would not necessarily be some of the the details that can just bog down the process in some regard. So I think that's sort of the the spirit and the problem we're trying to solve from the curriculum perspective and then grants just before that. So I hope that helps provide some additional clarity.
No. I do have a follow-up on the on the curriculum piece. I mean, if the issue is we approved, for example, a new a new curriculum or a curriculum at one point, but there are modifications made along the way, that then changes the curriculum that was initially approved. So why in that model would it not come back to the board being considered a remodeled curriculum, albeit not particularly a new curriculum? I mean, if it's remodeled, it's essentially new. I mean, it's not brand new, but it's remodeled new. So I'm a little unclear on on that.
So some of the revisions that we offer are somewhat minor in nature, and that's, I guess I'm offering that component of that. And then the other component that, just to share, too, is that our our current Arizona statute only requires new and delegated programs that go, excuse me, new and deleted programs that go forward to the governing board. So, you know, Teresa Tony can can maybe provide additional context there. So, again, our interest was related to new courses and new programs coming forward. When those modifications are made, I guess I'd offer, I don't know that it's necessarily new, because many of those modifications are relatively minor when it comes to changes that that have been brought forward before. But if there's any other comments, Teresa, I know if you want to speak to the Arizona statute, you please add some context to that, because I know I spoke somewhat generally to that.
And, Dr. Lashinsky, thank you. I would agree with that. I would say that the proposal that we are putting forth would mirror that of Pima Community College. And we were, you know, really trying to be consistent with our state peers or, you know, colleagues in the state of Arizona. The good thing about this conversation, I think, is it gives us the opportunity, particularly in this work session, if there are any elements of the proposal that the board would like to modify or change or give us direction as to what it would feel comfortable with, we are definitely, you know, wanting to be flexible and, you know, find that middle ground in which we could have a policy that's easy to administer and yet still meets the expected accountability of the governing board.
I have more way more questions, but my time is up, so we can come back to me at another time. Thank you.
Miss, I think you had some questions.
I'm sorry, who's next?
Ms. Nguyen, would you like to go next?
Is that okay?
Yes.
So along the same lines as what Mrs. Sullivan just said, I have some concerns. Yes, we want to expedite things, and yes, especially in the creation of curriculum, as as technology moves forward and other things happen, we want to be responsible to the needs in the community. But I have, I have a problem with the board being referred to as the thing that bogs things down. And I don't think it was meant that way, but the problem is, we're elected to serve and represent the interests of the taxpayer. And one of the checks and balances is that the board reviews the cost, the programs, the things that you're putting forth. And my concern about that the board may elect to delegate through policy certain areas, that's very vague to the chancellor for administrative and procedural responsibility. I don't know what that means, and I think the devil's in the details. So if you give me a very broad statement like you're giving me in the proposed additions, I would ask for more specificity. I think we do monitor reports, and we do look at those things, but we don't get into the weeds so much. And I think that this gives us an opportunity to do shared governance, to work with you on the creation of curriculum. I know that when we brought the construction programs to South Mountain, that was something that was done in tandem with the district office, and I think that was a positive thing. The languaging in this and the way in which this is being proposed concerns me, that you're trying to remove authority from the board. And and I I'm pretty much certain that my constituency would not want that authority removed at this particular time. So I am willing to, to Teresa's point, work to get the language, but I think this language is too too broad and not specific to what you're what you're trying to come to. I do want to expedite things for your convenience, but I also want to make sure that we are not left out of the process. And this, to me, is maybe just a little bit too vague to determine whether we are or not. So I don't know if anyone wants to take that, but that's that's how I'm reading what I'm or that's how I'm interpreting what I'm reading.
Board Member.
Thank you, Board Member Nguyen. I'm sorry, Dr. Lashinsky, go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Tony. Now, all I wanted to offer, Board Member Nguyen, is please, I hope none of my comments reiterated or reinforced a feeling of bogging down the process. Again, I think the processes we have in Maricopa have all been designed and developed with the best of intentions, but there are moments in time where they just feel elongated or that the process just takes too long. So and that's not at any means a fault of the board or how we've structured things. It's just the nature, I guess, who we are after being such a large institution or organization. So I appreciated you expressing the interest of expedite and making the process seem quicker and faster. I think we have that same interest. And I think also our interest is not in any way to exclude or remove the board where the board wants to have its involvement. So I guess I wanted to offer that that perspective and clarification about the sense of bogging down, because that's not the intent or the spirit of what this was meant to be.
Okay, thanks. The other thing that was mentioned was Pima County, Pima Community College. And Pima Community College is a much smaller system, and so I appreciate that they're our sister college and they're in Arizona, but Miami Dade would be more comparable, and I don't know what their policies are. So I would be more comfortable with comparing us to a larger college system than than the Pima system. I think they have, they have the advantage, if you will, of being a smaller system, and I think that they can probably do things that us as a larger system don't have that same agility. We'd like to, but we are a 10 college system. And I do love the idea that we charge the same, that we create uniformity between the systems and between the college campuses. But I, again, I'm really worried about authority and conceding more authority to a chancellor. And also, I would have a caveat in here, until we have permanent positions, we have many interim positions, and I think there's a different accountability when you have a permanent chancellor. So I would not want this policy to go forward until we had a permanent chancellor. And Mrs. Sullivan, that that concludes my input. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Nguyen. I do want to mention that Miami Dade is one of the institutions that we looked at. Part of the challenge in conducting benchmarking, particularly when we're looking at the policies of different colleges and universities, so much of what our policies are are based upon Arizona statute. So when you may look at a Miami Dade or, you know, some other large systems, they have a totally different governance structure based upon their location. And so it's, in a lot of ways, it was comparing apples to oranges and oranges to apples, but we most definitely did seek to identify what other multi-college systems were doing in terms of the administration of these items.
Thank you.
This is Mrs. McGrath. I would like to comment and ask some questions about this also, if it's my turn.
Please go ahead.
Thank you. On the course fees, I don't, is it Mr. Jacobson or Dr. Jacobson?
It's doctor, but I'll answer it either.
That's what I thought, okay. You mentioned that it takes a very long time to make these changes. What's a very long time? We've changed course fees within the last year or two years, and I didn't recall it was a very long time. What are you talking about there?
Well, what I mean is that it can. It doesn't always. So there are windows for these kinds of things, right? A proposal has to be made by a certain date in order to work through the approval process to get to the board approval process at a point in the board's cycle when it's going to meet, right? And if you miss that window, then you also potentially miss the window for getting it into your schedule for the following semester. So it, you know, it's one of those sort of moonshot things. Sometimes there's a broad window, and you have plenty of time to make these decisions, but sometimes if you've missed that window, you're kicking yourself all the way from spring to, you know, the next fall. So you're, you know, you're talking about a difference between, you know, seven or eight months in being able to offer that course for the first time. It doesn't always take that long, but it can, and it depends on, you know, how far in advance you know.
I'm still a little bit confused. The board meets monthly, except for July. So how does the board meeting affect the timing?
It's it's not just the board meeting, it's the whole process. It's the process at the college level of approval. And so it's the, it's not the board meeting itself, it's how the various levels of approval cycle through and various bodies, you know, meet on their own calendars. If I had a whiteboard, I could illustrate it better.
I'm still a little bit confused. Everyone's talking in generalities here. So what what approval process does this have to go through before it hits the board meeting? Walk us through that. What happens?
Well, if, okay, so if I had a faculty member, I don't, I do not currently have any course fees in my department, but if I had a faculty member who wanted to offer a course that really required a substantial, you know, equipment or, you know, say a journalism class, which is part of my department, at the point at which we made the decision to offer that class, we would have to be far enough out from the next time I have to turn in a course schedule, which is months in advance of when registration goes live, to go through the process of getting approved at the college and then at the board level.
So how many months in advance do you have to turn in this proposal?
Well, for example, I will turn in my fall of '22 class schedule in late January of '22. And so if I had a course that I wanted to add to the fall schedule but did not know that I had course fees for, it would already be too late in December of '21 to get it on the schedule for fall of '22.
And that's because it takes?
Because it would have to be approved first by me, then by my dean, my vice president of academic affairs, and then the board.
So that's four months or four weeks or what?
Depends on where we are in the board meeting cycle and all of those things. So it's it's different wheels turning.
Well, you mentioned four different places where you need a decision.
Right.
And each one of those takes how long?
Well, some of them are pretty much pretty quick. Like, I can make the decision pretty much myself to forward that. But, you know, course fees currently, the cycle, I'm sorry, since I don't have any currently, but we only do course fee approval cycles a few times a year as a district.
Thank you. I'm still puzzled.
Mrs. McGrath, can I can I add something to what you're asking?
Sure.
So, Dr. Jacobson, you're you're speaking of a of when we're offering a new course and a and a course fee that goes along with that. Is that is that how, is that what I'm hearing?
It can be that, and that adds, that adds all of the cycles of curriculum approval to it as well. But currently, because each college has to apply for the fee, if my college has not already been approved for it, we still have to go through that same approval cycle.
So if you're just increasing a fee, is the process still the same?
Yes, if you are increasing a fee beyond what the current maximum is, or at a college that doesn't have a currently approved maximum.
Okay, thank you.
I'm still puzzled as to what problem we're solving here, because it seems to me that you want things done instantly, perhaps not instantly, but faster than they are now. And I don't know that that is a big problem. These are all big decisions, and as far as I'm concerned, they should take some time. And I'm very concerned about what problem is being solved with cutting the board out of these monetary decisions, which is what they're mandated to do in the statutes.
If I may step in just briefly here to provide some greater context to Dr. Jacobson, too. And so what I'd offer is the the board would still be.
Excuse me, who's this speaking?
I'm sorry. My apologies. This is Eric Lashinsky, our interim provost. My apologies on that. What I would offer is that the the board would still be involved in the setting of the course fee limit or capacity, if you will, the cap. And so therefore, the board's involvement would be at that that level, and then the colleges would have the ability to work within the course fee cap or maximum that was established and agreed upon as well. So that's the spirit of what was, again, intended to then alleviate sort of the again, intended to then alleviate sort of the continual increase by one college if we know it's already underneath what a capacity or a course cap or course maximum would be, to try to avoid that. So that's the spirit of it. I don't think the intent was trying to remove the board necessarily from the budgetary responsibilities. But I think the board's involvement would be at that level of the course maximum or the course capacity. So again, that's the spirit or the intent of what was being proposed.
I agree. That's the spirit and the intent, but that is not the outcome. Thank you, President Sullivan. I'll let other people comment on this.
If I may?
Please.
So first, I want to thank the the course fee committee for all the work they did. I really appreciate that because, as most of you know, that's one of the areas that that gets under my saddle. But I agree. I mean, it's I I'm reluctant to give up some of the responsibility of looking at the the fees. And I think, you know, by having a a citizen board, taking a look at whether it's the curriculum or whether it's the fees, we're giving a a a different perspective. I mean, everybody and everybody else is professional educators. We're we're not. And so having that that additional eyes on it to to walk it through, I think is is worth the extra time that it's going to take. And again, it's the extra time is 24 hour period before our meeting, right? It's that's what we have to submit so that it's on the on the agenda. So I don't I don't see where it's cutting down more than more than a 24 hour period before a meeting. And I do have a lot of questions about fees, and I do have a lot of questions about the process for for fees. And I but I agree, and I think it's great that we can have a some consistency and some accuracy with with the fees and 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 building it that way and approving it one time for for all of them. But even as we look at the hypothetical studies class, and to paraphrase, fill the dreams, if you if you charge it, they will spend it. You can you can see that when when they don't have a fee, they're not charging only only one, two colleges, three colleges at a fee. But then when we add an approved fee of $25, you're suggesting that all the colleges, except for two, are going to be charging a fee. So that's why I'm afraid that we if we give that that cushion, I'm afraid that that we're going to charge it. Because if it's there, they're going to take advantage of it. But yeah, I because we have so many questions about all the processes here, I think that's another reason why I would be reluctant to to give up the authority to to review these things before before they get get through and give it all up to to the chancellor or whoever. If we don't have a chance to take a look at it, because again, even as I look at the fees, and as you know, I come through the fees every every twice a year to do this, and I see how they've gone through the process, and even going through the process, I'm able to catch some things that make me scratch my head and it makes me ask questions and and point out some some maybe flaws or errors in the in the process. And I don't want to give up that part because, you know, I have no life. So it helps to give me something to do to comb through all the fees. So so, yeah, I again, I'm going back to what Ms. Wen and Ms. McGrath and and Ms. Sullivan have said, too, that are we solving much of a problem by giving up by giving up this this responsibility or giving up this this authority? That's where I am with it.
Dr. Thor, would you like to make any comments or ask questions? And also, thank you, Dr. Noreen. I'm cognizant of time, and so I thought perhaps we could also hear Dr. Thor's comments.
No, I'm done.
And then, and this is Ms. Smith speaking. And one recommendation I'll just put out there before Dr. Thor speaks would be, it seems that bundling these three issues into one may have been overly ambitious. And so I can go back with Teresa and team to identify perhaps one of the three that we will continue to unpack for the board moving forward. Dr. Thor, would you like to add anything to our conversation today?
Thank you, Ms. Smith. I've been listening very carefully to the conversation and the concerns. And I'm slightly conflicted. You know, when I reflect back on the 20 years that I was president of Rio Salado College, and Rio Salado probably receives more grants than all the other colleges combined. And I do recall that there were times that we actually ran into problems with our granting agency, because we were not meeting our timelines. And that wasn't simply because of the need to wait for board approval, but it also had to do with our HR processes and so on, and how long it took us to get the personnel on board to be able to implement grants. So I I do think it's worthwhile to spend some time, as I know you already have, on how to expedite the implementation of grants. And perhaps the solution here may be raising the minimum amount of a grant that's required to have board approval, or to put into the criteria that the board would also approve a grants that require institutionalization of the program once the the grant expires. On the curriculum, I'm similarly conflicted. I mean, the law requires that we have to approve new programs and deleted programs. But we also get a lot of really minimum course changes. And I have to ask the question as whether we're value added on that level of frankly minutia. So I think it's very important that the board spend its time and its energy on policies and strategic directions and major issues that the college district is facing, and not allow ourselves to spend our time and energy on pretty minor operational issues. So the bottom line for me is that I think these are areas that could use some improvement. But perhaps the administration, faculty, and staff ought to go back and look at what can be done to improve timeliness and efficiency, but not remove authority of the board.
Thank you, Dr. Thor. Well, I know that we were hoping to get to agenda review at 5:30. I've taken careful consideration of the concerns that have been reflected by the board. And as I said, I'm happy to go back to our interim provost, interim chancellor, and Ms. Tony on the topics discussed. Before I turn us back over to President Sullivan, are there any other comments from any of the other presenters today before we conclude?
Board Member Smith, this is Teresa Tony. I would just like to thank the board for the opportunity for us to present the ideas. And we definitely will take the feedback. It was very valuable to get your perspective and identify the gaps. We've been actually working on this for a year, and we didn't want to place anything on the agenda for first read or adoption without having some sort of conversation. And so we really appreciate the board's time and opportunity to give us that.
And this is Ms. Sullivan. I also want to, and my thanks, and particularly to you, Ms. Smith, for taking the lead on this on behalf of the board and working well with the staff, Dr. Tony, her team, Dr. Leschinsky, his team, and others in in bringing this forward. I do appreciate that you're willing to go back and revisit and modify, take into consideration some of our dialogue this evening, and work to bring us forward, bring another product forward that we would also want to have a work session on, but that could perhaps address some of the concerns, not just from the board, but also certainly the issues that were raised that brought these topics to the forefront in the first place, such as expediency, efficiency, not getting too deep in weeds as board members, et cetera, et cetera, but still maintaining the integrity and fiduciary responsibilities of the board, given our current concerns. So thanks for that.
You're welcome. Happy to turn to agenda review if you feel that's appropriate.
Okay, so Dr. Leschinsky and Dr. Gonzalez, do you have anything at the last minute? I'm not last minute, but before we move on.
President Sullivan, just thank the thank Board Member Smith and members of this task force that worked to prepare this presentation. Thank you.
And I just want to offer, express thanks and gratitude for all those involved, and appreciate the exchange of ideas and feedback. Very valuable. So thanks, everyone.
Okay, so with that, thank you, everyone. I think I'm going to pause this for maybe 30 seconds if people have to readjust themselves in their chairs. And we can move on to before we move on to agenda review. So it's 5:31. I'll convene us in one more minute. Okay, I'm presuming everyone's ready. Elza, you must be ready. And so with that, at this time, I call to order the agenda review meeting of the Maricopa County Community College District Governing Board of December 7, 2021. Tonight, we are reviewing the agenda for the December 14, 2021 board meeting. Again, I want to announce we are live captioning our meetings. Please look in the chat window of our WebEx meeting where you will find a link. Please click on that link to open a webpage with the live captioning. And again, for our record, I'd like to call a roll call vote of board members with starting off to note that Miss our board trust student trustee, Mr. Evans, is not present, nor is Ms. Bitter Smith this evening. And with that, I'll move to you, Ms. McGrath. Are you present?
Yes, I am. Thank you. I keep hitting the wrong side of my mouse.
I do that, too. But thank you. Glad you're with us. Dr. Noreen?
I'm present.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Present.
Thank you, Dr. Thor.
Present.
Ms. Wen?
Present.
And with my presence again, compliment of the board's six members present, one absent, and our student trustee is also not with us this evening. So as we move into our agenda review, as always, there are the regular meetings that are noted, presentations with the chancellor's report. We will have citizens interim for next week pending any interest from someone to speak. And I read that instructions previously. Those are also noted on our website and on board docs. How to work with us on citizen interim. We will then at that meeting move to consideration of the consent agenda items. And I will read the items that will appear on that and ask for comment and questions. First item on that would be approval and recommendation to name the athletic facilities at South Mountain Community College in honor of Dr. Raul Cardenas. Any comments or questions?
Ms. Sullivan?
Yes, Dr. Thor.
Thank you. I am delighted to see this. I had the privilege of working with Dr. Cardenas for many, many years, both in his capacity as the founding president of South Mountain Community College, then as the president of Paradise Valley Community College, and as my boss in the time that he served as interim chancellor. And a number of the other individuals who were founding presidents, such as Arnett Ward at Chandler Gilbert, or Dr. John Cordova at Paradise Valley, have been recognized for their outstanding service. And I definitely think it's time we do that for Dr. Cardenas. Thank you.
Certainly. Any other comments or questions on item two? Being none, item three on our consent agenda will be approval of curriculum items. There's of courses, there would be three deletions, modifications, nine new courses, 25 in the occupational programs, there are new modifications for 20, new will be six modifications, 21, deletion 16, academic programs, deletions 11, and the details are in the documents that we've either received through board docs or over the or in hard copy. I guess it reinforces part of what we were talking about earlier tonight. But with that, any comments or questions?
Ms. Sullivan?
Oh, yes. Hello?
Hi, I would just, I wouldn't hold it up, but I would just be interested in the new ones, like how long they took to get through the process, given the conversation we just had.
Sure.
25 big classes. So I would love to know when they were originated, you know, because they're now coming to our review. How long did it take for those 25 classes to get to us? If that's not arduous, I don't want to give a big burden to anybody, but if that could be done fairly quickly, that would that would satisfy some of this for me, too.
So, Dr. Gonzalez, Mrs. Wen has asked that question. Is that something we want to address tonight? Or will you come back to us with an update at next week's board meeting?
President Sullivan, Board Member Wen, I can ask Dr. Leschinsky if he's got an immediate response, but my my guess would be that we would probably need to have some time to get you an answer to your question.
Absolutely. I would, but if we could have it by next week, it would be really telling. Because I think the work that everyone did was important, but I'd like to see it in practice. And this is a great example.
So just just to be clear, Board Member Wen, the question is focusing primarily on the creation of the new, the 25 new courses?
Yeah, yes, because that's that's from zero to getting to the board, right? Because we're now asking for board approval for these 25 classes. So I would like to know when the 25 new classes got started in the process. And, you know, some maybe two years ago, some maybe a year. I just would, that information would be very helpful in what you're asking us to do based on the previous work session. Okay?
We will have that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Being none, move to item four, approval of acceptance of a new grant award of $246,377 from Wildfire to the Maricopa County Community College District for the SNAP Community Partner Project. The project period is from October 1, 2021, to September 30, 2022. Are there any comments or questions? Being none, we've moved to item five, approval of approval to award a job order contracting purchase order in the amount of $391,763.41 to Kiantate Construction for the Domestic Waterline Replacement at Glendale Community College. Are there any comments or questions? Being none, we would move to item six, approval of a job order contracting purchase order in the amount of $1,822,582.29 to Kiantate Construction for the Phase 2 remodeling of Kermit Key Hall at Estrella Mountain Community College at Estrella Mountain Community College. Okay, that was a bit redundant, but are there any comments or questions?
Ms. Sullivan?
Yes, Mrs. McGrath.
I again could not make work my mouse correctly. I'm concerned about Glendale Community College with the pipes being torn up. Where is this building? Is it on the southeast part of the campus?
All right. So you're moving us back to item five on the consent agenda. And, Dr. Gonzalez, is there someone on the panel this evening that could answer that question?
Yes, President Sullivan, Mrs. McGrath, I'm going to see if Dr. Labor Reese is on with us this evening.
Good afternoon. Good evening. Yes, I am here, President Sullivan, Mrs. McGrath. I cannot tell you specifically where the construction will occur, but I will find that information out and have it for you tomorrow. What I can tell you is that we have experienced significant impacts to our water lines. And this is an effort to ensure that as we start to welcome a larger presence of our students and community members on our campus, that we can welcome them to a safe campus.
My question is, where is this building located on the campus? It is, is it on the southeast part of your campus?
Mrs. Sullivan and Mrs. McGrath, I'm not sure, but I will find that information out and have that answer for you tomorrow.
You don't know which building it is or where it's located on the campus? I'm confused. I'm confused.
I apologize. I don't know the question. I don't know where it's located.
Dr. Labor Reese, if I could jump in for a second? This is Kim Grunio, interim CFO. I do have Gary Everhart available. I do believe he should be able to answer that question. Gary, are you able to answer?
Yes, thank you, Kim Grunio. Appreciate that. President Sullivan, Mrs. McGrath, that actually, you are correct. It is the southeast portion of the campus. It's actually a water line that exists between multiple buildings. And this is an old pipe that dates back to the 1960s during the original installation of the, of the campus.
My concern is, and I have commented on this in the past, although it's been several years, that on the campus, they have some Dalbergia sisu trees, and they multiply unbelievably well. And they do tear up pipes. And I think that part of solving this problem is that you must get rid of those trees because they do tear up water pipes and do awful damage. And you can't just cut them down because they will regenerate from the roots. So I would strongly suggest that in accordance with...
Yeah, Mrs. McGrath, we lost you.
Stupid cursor again. You need to get rid of the Dalbergia sisu trees there. You need to hire someone that knows how to get rid of them because they regenerate, and they are very good at digging up pipes. Thank you. That's my comment on this.
President Sullivan, Mrs. McGrath, thank you very much for that comment. We will continue working closely with Al Gonzalez out at the, out at the college to make sure that the location of those trees is not directly impacting this pipe and/or the replacement with a new pipe. Thank you.
The trees spread like you would not believe. Their roots go like crazy. You must get rid of them. It's not decide where they're located. That won't do you any good. They must be removed.
Thank you for that comment. We will absolutely make that happen with the assistance of the director, Al Gonzalez. Thank you.
Mrs. McGrath, for next week, do you want any other information presented on this? Or does that satisfy what you need to know right now?
No, I've observed these trees, and I've observed somewhere they've tried to cut down the mother tree, and they've been springing up. And I've talked to people about this before. I was in the nursery business for quite a while. I'm not just talking off the top of my head. In fact, Dalbergia sisu have been outlawed in many places because of the tendency that they have to spread and tear things up that the roots can get into.
Thank you. So for purposes of the consent agenda, the approval item will remain in the consent agenda. But at some further date, Dr. Reese and others, if there is a way that you can inform Mrs. McGrath and the board about the status of the trees at some point in the future in an update, that would be great. So, thank you. With that, then, those are the items that are currently presented for the consent agenda next week. There being no further comment or questions, I'm going to move us further in the agenda review. There are, at this time, no non-consent action items. So the next item would be the first read in information for proposed 2022 Community College District Governing Board meeting schedule. From my observation, it aligns with the consistency of the practice of this board over several years, many years, with agenda review and the third Tuesday of the month, followed by the board meeting on the fourth Tuesday of the month. And agenda reviews are normally scheduled to begin at 4:30, board meetings at 6:30. About our experiences, we often have work sessions and executive sessions surrounding those items. Anyway, that will be presented. Are there any other comments or questions to that item?
Yes. Yes, President Sullivan.
Who's that?
Jeanne McGrath.
Yes, Mrs. McGrath. I hear you.
We return to the schedule that we used to have. You said this has been many years. It has not been.
Well, since I've been here, it has been. So that's what I know.
I agree with you. You're absolutely right. But in the past, we had two weeks between the agenda review meeting and the formal board meeting. And I think some of the things that were brought up tonight show that we need two weeks in between the two meetings to look at problems, to get more information on various items. And I strongly recommend that we return to the previous schedule of a two-week period in between the two meetings. Thank you.
Sure. I think we looked at that again this last year, Mrs. McGrath. And one of the challenges was the issue around the financial statements and the preparation time in other regards. So we'll take another look at that, and I'll get other board input to Elsa. I mean, if other board members have input, they can provide that to Elsa, unless you have comment this evening. And, but I believe there is another reason why we kept it with the one week in between. Other board members, do you have comments on that?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan? Yeah.
So this change was made in order to allow an extra week to get additional items onto the board agenda. So this really ties back to the discussion that we just had about grants. Because if we move the agenda review back to two weeks before the board meeting, we have aggravated that situation such as the grants even more. So I think a week in between is reasonable myself, given that it helps quickly move forward the items that require board action.
Okay, any other comment from any other board member on that? Okay, again, we'll take another look at that. I'll talk to Dr. Gonzalez about that as well, Mrs. McGrath, and some of the others who contribute to the agenda with reports, et cetera, and determine what type of rotation works thus for all of the information needed. So thank you for your comment on that. Then other item is minimum wage increase. Any comments or questions on that? Being none, the third item under first read in information would be the employment and separations, September 18, 2021 through October 22, 2021 report. Are there any comments or questions on that?
Unfortunately, I do have a comment.
Okay, go ahead.
We are losing students. Our enrollment is way down, and yet we keep increasing the number of employees. Every month, we have more hires than we have fires or resignations. And I would like HR to look at that very carefully and consider, why are we adding new people? Thank you.
Does any, Dr. Gonzalez, do you want to answer that at all?
We will certainly take that under very serious consideration. And unless Dr., unless Dr. Trajetta Kelly has something that she'd like to offer now, that's, that's all that I would say at the moment, Mrs. Sullivan.
Okay, thank you. With that, then, the next item on the agenda would be the monitoring reports, the budget analysis report fund, general unrestricted fund for the 12 months ending 6:30, 21 final. So that would be an audited material. Are there any comments or questions on that? Being none, then, the next item on our agenda next week would be the traditional governing board reports, any current events summaries from board members. And then I want to bring us to the next item, the establishment of next meeting dates. And you can read those also in your board packet. But in the past, there has been a special meeting for the election of officers first week in January, particularly when we have new board members present. That week, there are two board members who are not available, out of town or just doing other things. So with that, we'll postpone elections to the January 18, 2022 agenda review meeting, to be followed by the, then a special meeting, and then we'll have the agenda review meeting at 4:30. The January 18 is, wait a minute, what am I reading here? Yes, so January 18 would be your agenda review meeting and the special elections meeting. Those, again, are scheduled to be virtual. And on January 25, we will have the regular board meeting at 6:30, possibly a work session on that. And if there is, we'll try to get that information out quickly. Board members, I also want to say that you've done really a great job in responding to the doodle poll to Ms. Vasis on a potential board retreat. And I believe she has all the documentations. We've double-checked people's schedules here, there, and everywhere. And unless there is some interruption that, similar to what occurred last time, I believe we will be meeting on the 14th or 15th. With that, 15th is the Saturday. So the 14th evening and 15th Saturday, I believe I have that right. So just for the good of the order, is there any last minute comment on any item on our agenda? So being none to have a motion to adjourn this meeting and enter into an executive session.
Done.
And who's the second?
I'll take it.
Dr. Noreeney, thank you. All those in favor, board members in favor of moving into exec session, please vote by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Being none, I want to thank everyone for their attendance this evening at the agenda review meeting, and those of you who were with us earlier in the work session. And board members, we're going to follow our usual protocol. We are going to exit WebEx, and we're going to enter Google Meets for the executive session portion of our meeting. I will try to convene as soon as I know we're all present with others with us this evening. And so this meeting stands adjourned at 5:53 p.m.